All city council members are present this evening as are members of the city staff. I've asked Councilor Brad Mitchell if he would lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please.
If everyone will please arise and repeat the pledge with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag-
To the flag-
-of the United States of America-
And of America.
And to the republic which stands one nation after God indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this point, we'd like to take a moment of silence.
Did you get it? Not yet, okay.
Take a moment of silence. We would ask that you remember those who are serving in our military-
Okay, so I just barely said it went through. So I might just take a few minutes.
Around the world and here at home and protection they offer us for our way of life. We'd also ask you to remember our first responders, our firefighters, our police officers, and those who serve daily here in our own community to also protect us and help us in time of need. We'd ask you also to remember our city council this evening as they make important decisions that affect the residents and those who come to our community. We'll now take a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Okay, move next to public comment. Would you like to read that letter again? I think Councilor Ellis wasn't here. There may be others in the meeting that would like to hear that that have joined us.
Yes, you're gonna want to make a comment, correct? Okay, perfect. So I'll read this first, and then I do have individuals down here. Alright, so this is from Lori Fleming. As you consider what to do with the surplus law on Ritter Drive, may I make a suggestion? Sorry, I'm echoing over here. Okay. Here's what I would like to see happen with that law, and it would give Riverdale a great recognition. Riverdale would become a partner with the Northern Wasatch Association of Realtors to complete this project. The program is called Have a Heart and is a nonprofit home building program. The Northern Wasatch Association of Realtors, along with the Home Builders Association, builds homes for those who are less fortunate and can't afford a home, like a vet with issues or families with special needs. The buyers purchase a home at discounted rate, and lots of supplies are donated and fundraisers are held by the realtors to support some of the building costs. Leighton has built the last three houses and have donated lots that have been a lot like this one on Ritter Drive. Ritter Drive, that is difficult to build on and have some issues. This lot would be amazing for that program. The city would be involved in all the advertising and a part of a great program. I have looked for years for a lot that would work for this program in Riverdale with no luck. I have talked to a couple of people about this lot in the city and was told that they wanted to see what was going on with the development first. Since this development is taking over 10 years to develop, it might be a great opportunity to move forward on this lot. There is a website and a video that explains this program in detail, along with an application that the buyers have to apply for. I'd be happy to share this with you. There is also an option for the city to lien the lot so that buyers are not getting it at a discount house and then turning around and selling it at a profit. The lien would go away after time. Where housing is so difficult right now and with lack of housing, this would be a great opportunity to make a difference in someone's life. I would ask that you would consider this program.
Thank you, Lori, for that letter. For that to be discussed, we'd need to put that on a future city council agenda. We'd need at least two city council members to ask to have that put on. So if you'd like to do that, at least my discretionary items. You can tell me now or let me know in discretionary items. If you'd like to put that on a future agenda, so. Go ahead.
Okay, once again, my name is Jane Hall. I live at 1265 West 5175 South. And Ms. Nay just emailed me the concept for the plan site for the homes up there on Ritter Drive. And I haven't had a huge opportunity to look at it. My concern is still about the traffic, the on and off of Ritter Drive and accessing 1500 West. There is absolutely no way they could do that. And it doesn't look like the plot even shows that that's a possibility. So I am still really concerned about that many homes, the R16 versus the R18, which is what butts up against that from 1500 West, the Coleman Farms area. So I just want to express my concerns about that and let you go from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane.
That's all the public comment I have, Mayor.
That you've got?
I don't have any texts, Mayor.
Alright, thank you.
Steve is raising his hand.
Steve?
Mayor, if I just could briefly, and it's mainly just for clarification purposes, on that piece of ground, I don't want us to get ahead of ourselves. If the council chooses to declare it a surplus tonight, we still have to take another step. And there has to be a public hearing, which includes additional notice than what we generally do. I think we have to give a seven or eight day notice on something like that. And then at that point, that's where the city would decide what they're going to do with it, one way or another. That wouldn't be just the fact that we declare it surplus tonight. All that does is get the wheels in motion. But it wouldn't be until that next meeting that we actually decide what we're gonna do with it. So I just want to clarify that. That wouldn't happen tonight, even if it is declared surplus. That's a completely separate matter.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Steve, for that clarification. Okay, move on next to presentation and reports. I just have one item that I'd like to mention. About a year and a half ago, the city applied for funding for a or two active transportation projects. Active transportation is projects that are used without vehicles, bicycles, pedestrians, et cetera. We applied for funding for a walkway to go under Interstate 84 on 1050 West. This is just a walkway that's just north of the Utah Military Academy. That was looked at by our engineers, and we had Wasatch Front Regional Council come up and look at that. But it was estimated that that would cost, I believe it was close to $400,000 to do that. I serve on the Wasatch Front Regional Council ATC Committee. I was in a meeting this last Wednesday, and I did some follow-up after that meeting. In that meeting, they mentioned that UDOT has been given, awarded $35 million for regional active transportation projects. So I did some follow-up with some people there on Thursday. And that project, under Interstate 84, that's been fully funded by UDOT. They're gonna go ahead, they're gonna put that walkway under there. I remember the ATC or the Wasatch Front Regional Council people, when they were here, they made comments that the students, the kids were walking on the Jersey barriers out in the middle of the road, so they were pretty concerned with it. But I think we might have heard that, but UDOT has fully funded that. I don't have a start date when they're gonna do it, but usually their projects, when they have the money, the funding, they go ahead rather quickly and do the project. So that may very well be done this summer. The other project that we asked for was doing a bike path, a trail for bike and pedestrians along South Weaver Drive, State Road 60. And this would extend from 1050 West, where the new roundabout is proposed to be being planned for. And that would go east of 475 East and South Weaver. So as of yet, I know they're looking into it. I talked to the planner at Wasatch Front Regional Council on Thursday, and he remembers seeing this recently, fairly recently. So I know they like this project. We've also got support from South Weaver on this. And I believe we can pick that up also from Mayor Cutler and you when it makes that a regional project, because it does benefit those communities as well as it does Riverdale, so. And the mayor of South Weaver, she also serves as the chair of the ATC Committee. So we've got, I think, quite a bit of support on that. Whether that'll happen, we'll have to see, but they do have an extra, this is extra $35 million over what they normally have, so. I just thought I'd pass that on to you, let you know what's going on with that. I think that'd be a great project out there. The one on 84 is funded, the other we're still hopefully getting funding for that, so. And that is a state road, so that's helpful also. I know the people are looking into this, think it's a really good project. Move on. Chief Shali, are you on with us tonight?
Yes, sir.
Do you have, we had a couple of house fires recently. Do you want to make any comments on those? I know that one that was totally destroyed, whether there's some things with that. Did you care to comment at all on anything? Give us an update on that?
More so, we just had a well-involved kitchen fire. And then the following Monday, we had a suspicious fire that occurred. But right now, I really don't know if I want to comment much on that with the investigation still underway.
No, that's fine. I kind of knew there were some things you didn't want to talk about. Alright, let's still be investigated and looked at. So thank you very much, Chief.
Thanks, Mayor.
You bet. Move on next to city administration report. Mr. Kobe, do you have anything for this?
Just wanted to highlight one thing from the reports that you have there from our staff. That would be our employee recognition. This March, we're celebrating the anniversaries of a number of folks that you see there. 17 years from Camille over in the PD, that's fantastic. I'm so proud of her for her sacrifices and her efforts there. I know Steve Brinkman is grateful to have her and all of her help over there. We also see that Miranda has seven years with us over at Community Services. She does a great job working with our seniors. We have Tyrell with the PD, it's got three years. And then one year each for Dallas Naldert, Gage Bennett, Jeffrey Dingman, and Tyler Reese. So we're grateful to have an incredible staff here at the city, people who are dedicated to helping to make sure that we stay safe, that we stay happy, and that Riverdale is a great place to live and work and do business. And we are grateful for the opportunity to serve. And we're helping to keep it great here at Riverdale.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Kobe on any of the items or any of the other staff members? Okay, move on next to the consent items. This is consideration to prove our meeting minutes from February 2nd, 2021. That's for the strategic planning meeting held on that date. And also the minutes for March 2nd, 2021, the city council meeting that was held. Do we have any more changes and corrections other than the ones mentioned in our work session?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
A motion to approve consent items with one correction that we noted in our work session. Second?
Okay, Councilor Mitchell and Councilor Ellis, I believe, was it again? Thank you. Okay, move on to the action items.
We need to vote on that.
You know what? You're right. Okay. We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous in favor, thank you. Okay, move on next, our first action item. This is a public hearing to receive and consider comments regarding a budget amendment for fiscal year 2021. Before we open the public hearing, Mr. Carden, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to summarize really quick from the work session, there's really three parts to this budget amendment. One is for the grant the city's received. One is for some apparatus repairs in the fire department. And one is for some server upgrades for VDI users. And just ignore that 2018 date. It's all for fiscal year 2021.
Okay, thank you. With that, do we have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Councilor Arnold, Councilor Mitchell, a motion to approve and second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Unanimous in favor? The public hearing is now open. Just to let you know, you're welcome to come to the microphone if we have anyone there that would like to speak on this topic. Like you to keep your, state your name, and if you would, keep the comments to about three minutes. Thank you. Anybody there, Shane?
So I have no emails, nothing on YouTube, and then the individuals that are here are not gonna speak on the public hearings.
Alright, thank you. Move on next, action item B.
A motion to close public hearing.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing's closed. I gotta quit looking down the agenda too quickly for more stuff. Consideration of Resolution 2021-03, amending the budget for fiscal year 2021. Do you have any questions for Mr. Carden on this topic? He briefed it just a few minutes ago. With that, do we have a motion on Resolution 2021-03? Amending the budget for fiscal year?
I'd make a motion to approve the resolution you just stated, as stated within the packet.
Second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Councilor Arnold, was it Mitchell or Hilton?
Either.
Either.
Both, huh? Okay. Okay, any discussion on the motion? Ms. Nay, would you pull the council on the resolution, please?
Councilmember Ellis?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Councilmember Arnold?
Aye.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Unanimous in favor, thank you. Move on to action item number two. It's consideration of Resolution 2021-04. This is adopting the annual municipal wastewater report covering all areas in the incorporated boundaries of Riverdale City. Mr. Douglas, public works.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is our annual report to the state considering our wastewater program. I know you've all seen it before, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy trying to answer them for you.
Seeing none, we'll, do we have a motion on Resolution 2021-04?
Mayor? I'll move to a Resolution 2021-04, as stated in the packet. Second.
Okay, Mr. Mitchell, Mr. Arnold, any discussion on the motion? Ms. Nay, would you pull the council on resolution, please?
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Councilmember Arnold?
Aye.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember Ellis?
Aye.
Unanimous in favor, thank you very much. Okay, as suggested in our planning session, our work meeting, action item number three, we're gonna move it down to following action item number six tonight. Okay, it'll help with those that are there, that are joining us for the next two items. It'll help get them with those and save the other, which may be a more lengthy discussion, so. We'll do that to try to help those who've come in from outside to get out a little quicker, so. Okay, move on to action item four. Consideration of final subdivision site plan and plat approval for Riverdale Center 6 subdivision property located approximately 4163 to 4177 South Riverdale Road, as requested by Anderson, Walling &amp; Associates Incorporated and Riverdale Center North LLC. Mr. Eggit, Community Development?
Thank you, Mayor. Jake Tate will represent the parties on this item. He has joined us, as well as a few other parties who are available if they have questions with the property owners. This is a three-lot subdivision development project. And they're gonna be adding some new private access drive aisles, utilities, and supporting facilities as part of the subdivision and site plan approval, or site plan submittal, excuse me. It's located in a retail commercial park overlay zone. There is an existing development agreement that affects the property. This development is compliant with that agreement. There's no conflicts there. This matter came before the planning commission on February 23rd of this year, 2021, and the commission provided a favorable recommendation to city council for approval of the submitted final subdivision and site plan project proposal. There's no public hearing element required. And as noted in the work session, the general climate guidance is Plan Commercial High. This request does meet that requirement. With that, I just wanted to also know, I forgot to bring this up in work session, typically we'll see some kind of an engineer's cost estimate or bond requirement. In this case, there is none of that requirement, because all of the improvement that's being requested, as noted with the letter in your packet, is all within private area. There's no public rideaway impacts from the subdivision and site plan improvement. With that, you'll see the approval recommendation from our city engineer, city staff. And there's two items for, or from Mr. Douglas for the applicants that will need to be resolved prior to recording the plat that Mr. Douglas is comfortable with the project moving forward at this time. And with that, I would defer to the members of the council if you have any questions for me, the applicant, or other parties tonight. Thank you.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Eggit or Mr. Tate?
Mayor? I was wondering how many employees are looking at putting in that particular business?
I can defer that until the next item, when Dutch Brothers actually addresses, but I'll let them answer when they conclude their site plan.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I mean, I can speak for the whole council. Mr. Tate, if you can express our thanks to the efforts that owners making in updating this facility in this area, that we appreciate their efforts and expense to go through for this type of thing. So I would move to approve item number four, as stated within the packet and presented by Mr. Eggit.
Second.
Who is the second?
Mr. Hilton.
Mr. Hilton, you're quick. Okay, Mr. Arnold and Mr. Hilton, got a motion, got a second? Any discussion on the motion?
Well, I just, I want to reiterate what Alan said. I mean, to tear that building down and do this, fantastic. Really think it's awesome. Thanks for the investment and effort.
It is great, great thing. Thank you, Jake, and others that are there from Anderson, Walling, and Associates. It's a great project, and we're excited to see the old building go and something that looks like really good coming in, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to ask a question. On the south, okay, as you said, there's no public access from Riverdale Road. But if I'm looking at this correctly, on the south frontage, just off the frontage road, it looks like you've got cross-access with what I assume is the subway. Am I looking at that correct, the cross-access?
You are. You're correct. We'll maintain cross-access through to the south of the property.
Okay, because I can see there could be a lot of traffic where the coffee shop works on volume, and being able to access is crucial, of course, for drive-through especially. And I'm assuming there was no issues or problems with the property owners of the subway property, correct?
That's correct. We've had no issues with the property to the south. And Bart Haushen, who's representing Dutch Brothers, can address their site plan a little more in the next item, but they have design on their site so that the access to their drive-through comes from the north.
I'm having trouble hearing.
A different direction than subway, so traffic should be coming from a different direction and not necessarily crossing a couple of roads much, except when they exit.
You did break up a lot. I think that question, if he did mention, it'd be better.
I'm gonna let Bart Haushen, who is representing Dutch Brothers, address that with their site plan, which is coming up next. But I will note that they do have their drive-through coming from the north, so it's more fully, but I think they've done a great job kind of separating the traffic.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? With that, do we have a motion on action item four to approve the final subdivision site plan?
Motion's been made. Second, Hilton.
Okay. Okay, no other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous in favor, motion passes, thank you. Okay, move on to action item number five. Consideration of final- Consideration of final site plan approval for Dutch Brothers Coffee. It's located approximately 4177 South Riverdale Road as requested by Dutch Brothers LLC and Bar and House and Engineers. Mr. Eggit?
Thank you, Mayor. Our representatives for Dutch Brothers are Russ Orsi and Savannah Hutchins. Savannah works for Bar and House and Engineers. This is for, as we discussed in the last item, the Dutch Brothers Coffee site, which would be a drive-through cafe facility and retail eatery located at the 4177 South location on the subdivision in the previous discussion item. This also is a retail commercial overlay or park overlay zone, RCP. And the development that's been proposed is fully compliant with the development agreement for this area as previously constituted. During the last Planning Commission meeting on February 23rd, the commission provided a favorable recommendation to city council for the final site plan of Dutch Brothers as has been submitted. The Dutch Brothers group also followed through with the Design Review Committee review with the Design Review Committee on February 18th of this year, wherein the committee also provided unanimous support in favor of the designs for the elevation, coloration, signage, and landscaping as submitted. So there's no public hearing requirement. And again, the general plan for this area is planned commercial high, and this proposed project meets that use. The only item I would note, as it noted in the work session for the applicant, is that they follow through with the requirement of the Public Works Director to provide water shares that will need to be used to meet the water requirements on the site. And then there's some other items there that they will need to fulfill to the satisfaction of the Public Works Director prior to moving forward with pre-construction and development of the site. And with that, Mayor, and items noted prior that apply to this, I defer to you, council, for any questions you may have of me or the applicant group. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. ... Any questions? Mr. Stevens, did you want to ask yours? Mr. Ellis?
I'm gonna ask how many employees you're looking at putting in at that particular site?
Yeah, this is Nick Wecker with Bar and House. Dutch Brothers will hire a total of 15 to 20 employees. But at any one time, there'll be, you know, three to four employees on site.
That's great. You're welcome. For the community.
Thank you very much. Yep, we're excited to come into the community and looking forward to moving forward with our project.
Okay, any other comments or questions?
Mayor, move to approve action item number five as stated within the packet for the site plan for Dutch Brothers. And also, I just wanted to say in there, thank you for the cross traffic. It's gonna help Subway as much as it's gonna help Dutch Brothers as well, so good job.
They may even buy a sandwich as they go by. Yep. Okay, we got a motion. We've got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Who's the second?
Who's the second? I think it was Brayden.
It was Brayden.
It must have been Brayden.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, thanks. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, unanimous in favor. Thank you. Okay, move on to action item number six. First, let me thank Dutch Brothers. You're still on there for being here, but we really appreciate you being here. Appreciate you coming to Riverdale. We're excited for this. We like your colors. You're in a great location. We think you'll do really well. So thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone. We look forward to the council's new resolution and forward to working with staff, Colonel. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Thank you. Okay, move on to action item number six. This is consideration of ordinance 930. This is their proposed rezon request from Agricultural A1, Regional Plant Commercial CP3, and Low Impact Transition Overlay LIT zoning to Single Family Residential R16 zoning for properties located approximately 1526, 1528, 1560, and 1580 West Ritter Drive in Riverdale as requested by Riverdale Living LLC. Before I turn the time to Mr. Eggit for comments, this item was tabled at a previous city council meeting. To discuss this item, we would need to have a motion to table this ordinance. Do we have that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Who made the motion? Brent?
I did.
Okay, Council Ellis and Councilor Hilton, thank you. Okay, it's been removed. We need to vote on that. All in favor of moving it from the table?
Aye.
Any opposed? Why are you smiling, Alan?
What's that?
I just see you smiling, grinning from here to there.
I'm just a happy camper, you know?
I just, I thought maybe we missed something.
I don't know.
Looks like you got something good to eat there. Maybe that's what it is. Service is good at the Arnold Home, so... Okay. Did we vote on that? All in favor of moving that?
Yeah.
I couldn't, I really couldn't hear you.
Aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Okay, it's the item's been removed from the table. Mr. Eggit, would you like to comment on this project?
Yeah, I will keep it... I'll keep it brief, Mayor. I think the council's aware of what's going on with this. Just to note that this was tabled at the last meeting on February 16th with direction for the applicants to put together conceptual ideas on how the requested properties could be developed as a result of an R16 zoning designation. The applicants have since followed through with the request and provided the city with two concept ideas for potential development of these properties, both for transition or traditional, excuse me. R16 zoning projects would provide for 24 potential units. They also submitted a secondary, which is the cluster use designation, and that would provide for 26 potential units. All the below information in the packet and your executive summary thereafter is all the same as it was presented during the February 16th meeting. And just as a quick prior, this did come before the Planning Commission on February 9th, wherein a public hearing was held, and we received 312 telephone inquiries at that time prior to that meeting, and then one public comment was shared during the meeting. So with that, I think for the sake of time, Mayor, I will defer to the council if they have any questions on me. Hopefully, before I do that, hopefully you saw with your packet the attachment of those renderings. It was included with your email for the packet. So actually, the computer wasn't able to make it easy for the drawings to be added into your packet, so they were added as attachments. So hopefully you received that in your email for those renderings. And with that, I would defer to the council, Mayor, for further discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments or questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Mike, on the rendering, is there one that's R8 and one that's R6? Or what's the difference? They appear to be different sizes of lots, some of them.
They're both R16. With an R16 clustering, you can actually have smaller lot sizes in certain circumstances as long as you provide a open space or park element back to the project area that's publicly available. It would have to go through a conditional use approval process in order for the clustering designation to apply, but that's how clustering would apply. So that's why you'll see a few lots that are smaller than 6,000 square feet in that representation. They were exploring that as an option. And you could discuss further that concept with the applicant and/or the applicant's engineer if you want to explore kind of their reasoning in doing it that way.
I had a question. So if we agree to the rezon to the R16, we don't necessarily agree to that cluster that, like you said, is a conditional use, right?
That's right. The rezon is just that. It's just, it's a thumbs up, thumbs down for the zoning designation. There is no assumption that the development plans that have been submitted, they're purely conceptual. They have no bearing on what may happen in the future. This is purely a thumbs up, thumbs down for the zoning.
Hey, Mike? I just have some questions on R16. In the ordinance, it says that lots have to be a minimum of 60 feet wide. In the conceptual drawings, and I understand, you know, what you just said, but there was seven of 24 on the one drawing that met that requirement. And so that makes 17 that did not. They had some of them that were as little as 35 feet. So I think the applicant needs to know that these lots need to be 60 feet wide. And so the conceptual drawings, I mean, they don't meet the ordinance at all. And I think to qualify to meet the request for the council to have a conceptual drawing that is even, you know, close, needs to follow the ordinance. They have, on the 26 lots, the clustering one, there's only one lot that is the frontage, or the width is 63 feet. All the rest are, you know, well below that. So, I mean, I'm trying to see how these qualify for the request that we had to have a conceptual drawing, because the conceptual drawing has to be, you know, within the boundaries of the ordinance. And so right now, I mean, they submitted some drawings, but they're not even close to the ordinance. And I, I mean, I'm kind of struggling to see why we're talking about it when, you know, they're way off, like, you know?
I direct you to talk maybe with their team or their engineer as to how they design their concepts. I directed them to the code. They had access to the code. They designed it per, well, they were directed to design it per the code. At that, I don't know what else to say other than I directed them that direction.
And they're here to make comments if you have questions, Alan. I mean, Councilmember Arnold, sorry.
Yeah, you're fine. But the, so the ordinance is a minimum of 60 feet wide on the lots, a minimum of 60, or 6,000 square feet. And so, you know, we didn't get anything that we requested. So, I mean, I don't know what to ask the engineer, just because, you know, if, Mike, you gave them the code and I read it myself, you know, we just have this thing put together that has no relevance whatsoever. So I'm, I mean, we keep getting this stuff back, and it's just, you know, it would be nice to be able to see what we're looking at because, like Mrs. Hall that spoke, you know, we're looking at 2024 to 26 building lots, but it doesn't fit in any given way. So, you know, I'm kind of struggling with, you know, this was tabled pending a conceptual drawing, and it just doesn't fit at all. So, I mean, I would make a motion to table it again until we get, you know, a concept that is actually, you know, fits within the zoning ordinance. Because we, as a council, we're hamstrung or bound by the ordinances of the city. That's what we do. And, you know, we don't have the right to say, you know, let's swing the bat at this and see what comes, you know? I mean, I live in that area, and I really take my responsibility to protect the residents in that area seriously. You know, I think, you know, so anyway, I make a motion to table it again until a concept that fits within the ordinance is brought before the council.
Can I ask a question while that motion is still up?
Go ahead.
Uh, Mike, is that correct on the code that the R16 has to be 60 feet wide?
Those are minimum lot sizes, but with the cluster designation, they do have flexibility. And also, I just would like to note that a rezon traditionally is a thumbs up, thumbs down approval. We need to be careful of asking for extraordinary requirements with a rezon request. That's just one thing I want to make sure is clear as far as that's how the state has set it up. That's the expectation.
This is a, this is a rezon... Let me interrupt there. This is a rezon request. It isn't a preliminary site review. If they meet the requirements for the R16, you can approve that. And when they bring the site plan back, if there's something there that doesn't meet the code, you can have them change it or not approve it. We normally don't have people bring back concept plans to be exactly what we want to be on the property they're requesting a rezon for. So I think you need to consider that. You're gonna send these people back for two weeks, and they'll come back with another drawing, and somebody will say something they won't like that.
Understood.
Mike, let me finish, okay? Mike, I consider, and that's what we're doing tonight, we're considering a rezon request. And I understand council members as much as any of you. We want to do what's right and do the right thing. If the ordinance says 60 feet, that's 60 feet. But he just saying, I think Mike said that for a cluster that allows for some variance, are you sure that that cluster concept there isn't legal? So I would suggest you consider the rezon which they're asking for. And then when it comes to the site plan, you can either approve or disapprove it. You just, you're kind of holding them hostage, in my opinion.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. Can I please have my engineer speak to this? He's here?
Mayor, we need to address the table request.
Motion's withdrawn.
Thank you, Alan.
Can I make a comment, Mr. Mayor?
I think that Mr. ... Who's got the floor?
Go ahead and make a comment, and then maybe we can speak to that as well.
Okay, because...
Go ahead, Board.
Yeah, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to approve this as an R16. In fact, at the end, when the, when it was, the voting was taken, the chair, Mrs. Byers, even said, passed unanimously, you've got your rezon. So, you know, to bring in all this other stuff is purportless, and it's not part of the rezon. Rezon is, like you said, it's an up or down, and to hold...
You're breaking up, Board, quite a bit.
Okay, everybody mute your mics.
You're breaking up seriously, Ben.
You probably need to mute.
Oh, yeah, thanks.
Sorry, that was my fault.
Okay, is that better? Okay, yeah, it's, but like Miss Byers said, when the planning commission took the vote, it's unanimously passed, you've got your rezon. Now, this is, this is an up or down for just the rezon. And, you know, I think it puts the city in a little bit of, in an awkward position to start making demands on a petitioner when they, that aren't consistent with what they're asking for. And this is a rezon, and it should be addressed as a rezon exclusively as an up or down. Because it's, it puts undue necessary, unnecessary situations that aren't relevant to what's being asked for by the petitioner. And we need to stay with that. It's a strict rezon. Thank you.
So that is actually the reason we didn't bring a concept in in the first meeting, because we, in prior meetings, those comments have been made that a rezon is not the place for concepts. But we were asked, and so we went and did it. There were some concerns. We understand they wanted to look at them a little bit closer, so not a big deal. We did it. And I like what both you and the mayor have said about, you know, the cluster allows for some flexibility. I do have my engineer here as well, who can speak to some of these design issues, even though I agree that's not necessarily part of this request. But we can answer some of those things if, just so that, you know, because they were brought up. brought up. Do you want to come and speak to that? I have Mike State in here, and some of you know him, who put this together.
Mayor, before Mike takes the mic or whatever, I mean, the point's well made. So, I mean, to go for the rezone up or down, I'd get it. It's come from three or four different people. So, I mean, to address the rezone, that's, sounds good. So, I mean, to not look at the concepts and things like that, it's, that would be chasing the conceptual drawings.
Mayor, you're muted.
That's because Bart told me to mute.
I'm just unsure whether to speak.
Okay, how's that?
It's hard to know what, because we have answers for this, but it depends on it.
Can you hear me all right?
It sounds like they don't really want to.
Make an area.
Okay. I can't hear the person speaking, though.
They're just talking to each other, but you're okay. He just wants to know if you would like Mr. State to talk. Oh, Mr. State does want to address, sorry. Go ahead, Mike, sorry.
Well, greetings, councilors and Mayor Sherrill. It's good to see you guys. It's been a while. We used to spend a lot of time here. Josh has retained me as his civil engineer for this to prepare the concept plan. The purpose, he explained, of the concept plan was to address some of the concerns brought up at the previous council meeting. Those concerns related to the density of the R1-6 subdivision, that these lots would all be small, that there would be added traffic that could cause an impact to the street. And I do respect and am sensitive to Councilor Arnold's concern for his neighborhood. I've been doing residential and commercial and design and engineering and land planning for over 20, 22 years now. Much, if not most of that, has been single-family subdivision design. And so the concept plan was to address those concerns. One of the, so with regards to density, the first of those concerns, the first knee-jerk reaction with an R1-6 zone is to say, well, 6,000 square foot lots, well, if we take our total acreage, divide that by 6,000, that gives me X number of lots. That's so many lots. But the purpose of the concept plan shows that that maximum number of lots, if you just do it based solely on area, is not really feasible. The geometry, the angles, the depth of the property, the street width requirements, the lot width requirements, and all of that adds up to something considerably less than what you would calculate based on that area. So the concept plan should address that concern and show that the density you were afraid of is not achievable. What we, what we sought for was the maximum density possible at the most, sharpening our pencil as much as we can applying the ordinance correctly. With regards to Alan Arnold's concern that we ignored the ordinance, that is patently untrue, with all due respect to Councilor Arnold. The lot width requirement does not apply to the front property line. It applies at the setback, 25 feet back. So on a straight road with perpendicular lot lines, that lot width would be the full depth of the lot. On a curve, particularly at a cul-de-sac, the lot width is considerably less at the street, but the line tangent to the front setback has to be 60 feet long from property line to property line. And I was meticulous in making sure that that requirement was met in the subdivision concept without the cluster. Even so, what that represents then is, with multiple iterations, the maximum yield we could possibly squeeze out of this property with the R1-6 designation. So hopefully what this does is it, is it addresses your concerns about density, that that's the most density we could possibly get, wringing our hands and trying the best we can to pack it in as much as we can. The reality of it is, we may have been too aggressive in our application of the ordinances and there may be some give and take through the design process, which is not the purpose of today's hearing. We are prepared to follow that process through to its conclusion and satisfy all of the city ordinances along the way. Councilor Arnold should be comforted that it will be, it will not be more than the number of lots shown on these concept plans unless we have grossly misunderstood these ordinances. So if there are any other concerns about density or traffic with regards to that zone, I would be happy to address those. But as far as the particulars of the concept plan, it is correct that this is just a maximum yield and it will be something less than this as it proceeds to final design. And we will work through, in full compliance with all the city ordinances as we proceed through preliminary and final design at that point. Thank you. If you have any questions for me, I can stay here or, if not, I'll turn the time back over to you.
Do you have any questions for Michael? Thank you, Mike, for that.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilman.
I do like the R1-6 zoning for that area. It's, it's different. We live in a different time. You know, a lot of us don't want to live in an R1-6 area, but that is, that's kind of the reality now, want to live in R1-6. And I think in our discussions last time, if I remember, people were talking about 30 or maybe even 40 houses. And I really was comfortable with that. But after seeing the drawings and seeing, you know, 20, 23 houses, I felt a lot better about that. I was confused a little bit by the widths and stuff, but I feel comfortable with the number of houses. I feel comfortable with the R1-6 designation.
Okay, thank you. Any other, one other thing I think that the concept drawing showed, I know there was concern in the last council meeting that there would be access to 1500 West, and both of these concept drawings do not have an outlet onto 1500 West, which, which is a good thing. So I think that was taken care of. Any other comments, Mr. Arnold?
Yeah, in addressing the designation of R1-6, the, one of the things, when we, when we did the Coleman subdivision, the planning commission did approve an R1-6 for that development. And when we looked at it, because of the designation of the area, and to be fair to the people, you know, across the street or A1, the bards who are, were going to be directly to the east or A1, I just think that the area is R1-8. And to jump now, I think it's unfair to the builder that was in the Coleman subdivision who, you know, applied for the R1-6, and the planning commission said R1-6, but we said no to 60 homes stay in there because of the density. And I think if we're going to rezone that to a residential, we should be good to the integrity of the area, which is an R1-8. And so I think we should consider the R1-8, again, just for the integrity of the area and the surrounding neighbors.
Thank you, Mr. Arnold. Any other comments or questions?
Mayor?
Go ahead, Mr. Stevens.
Where the petitioner has specifically put in that they want R1-6, they went through a public hearing, the planning commission said R1-6, and unanimously approved it, does that open, I don't see Mr. Brooks here, but does that open the city to litigation, to, for the planning, for the city council to arbitrarily change it?
Do you want me to respond, Mayor?
Go ahead, Steve.
I'm not sure, I'm not showing up. I'm on my screen. But anyway, planning commission is a recommending body. It's not binding on the city. So the fact that she said something like that, I mean, ultimately it falls on your shoulders as a council. Planning commission does not determine that in any way, shape, or form. So as far as it being a legal issue, it's not, not to us.
Okay, so as far as the, I mean, because I see it, just because you got away with it, doesn't make it right. So if it was done before, I mean, it's like the bully in school. He gets away with it, doesn't make it right until somebody calls it out as for what it is. It's not right. It's, the petitioner has asked for something, a public hearing was held for that, and it was, and it was recommended, and it should stay as an R1-6 is what the petitioner has asked for. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stevens. Any other further comment or questions? We have a motion then on this ordinance, 930.
I'll make a motion here. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Motion to deny the request for R1-6 as to the integrity of the area.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Motion dies for lack of a second.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance 930 amending the zones, zoning of property in the, in the city's land use map to change the land use designation of land located at 1526, 1528, 1560 and 1580, Wester Drive from A1 and Lopat, low-impact transitional overlay zoning to multifamily residential R1-6 zoning.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Just a quick clarification, R1-6, single-family residential. Could I offer that?
Yes, I'm sorry. I didn't get it right.
Okay. Motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, Councilor Ellis, second that. Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Nay, would you poll the council, please, on the resolution of the ordinance? Excuse me.
Councilmember Ellis?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Councilmember Arnold?
Nay.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
It's four in favor. What opposed the motion carries? That should, Mr. Yates, that should, that was in your favor. Thank you. Thanks for your being here tonight and your other folks with you. So, move on next to, we're going to do action item number three now. This was, this was consideration of resolution 2021-06. This is declaring real property at 1570 West, Ritter Drive as surplus. This item was tabled to discuss at a previous council meeting. In order to discuss it, we need to have a motion to untable this, this resolution. Is that Mr. Stevens again? Looked like about three of you. So, Mr. Stevens, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, my Councilor Arnold. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Looks like unanimous in favor. This item is untabled and is open for discussion. Mr. Eggit, excuse me, Mr. Douglas, would you like to comment on this?
I really don't have anything to say other than what we've already said. We don't have to have an immediate plan to settle this. And if you, if you started now, it's not the time, I'm fine, if you want to just pull up too. So I'll leave that up to the council's discussion.
Mayor?
Thank you. Go ahead.
Based on Mr. Brooks' comments earlier about surplusing and then putting it on a future agenda to see what we do with it, I would make a motion to surplus the property.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Arnold and Mr. Hilton, seconds. Do we have any discussion on the motion?
Sure, I will. It's interesting that we tabled this so you see how it fit with the general plan and development, and there's no discussion on it. Anyway, I support the surplusing of it.
It's also interesting that Steve Brooks made the thing before. We still have to look at the general plan, but it depends on somebody's surgery.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Nay, would you poll the council on the resolution to declare the real property as surplus?
Councilmember Arnold?
Aye.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember Ellis?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous in favor. The motion passes. Property has been declared as surplus. Move on next to discretionary business. Do we have any discretionary items for this evening? Okay.
Yes, I do. I'm sorry. I had to unmute.
Good morning, Bart.
Had to unmute. If you need to put this on the schedule, I can understand. But the strategic planning on February 2nd, City Attorney Mr. Brooks gave a, some training on the open, annual open and public meeting act training. And I didn't bring it up then, and I thought about it, and I thought I should bring up an issue. Now, if it's not appropriate to bring it up, I won't. We can put it on an agenda item and talk about it another time. However you feel about it, I just wanted to make a comment on that that was presented a month ago.
What was it?
Of course, having you guys see this.
Okay. In that training by Mr. Brooks, he talked about having everything on the agenda, having everything given to public notice. One of the issues that I was, I thought about was, yeah, you could put it on public notice, but when we have executive sessions, which is not often, they typically use very generic terms of what they talk about when they're dealing with, in the executive sessions. Now, there's only been once in my time, but it was, it was a horrible, it's about a year ago, it was on February 18th, a year ago, went into an executive session. It was when we were discussing the pork chop land sale, potential land sale in the park. And...
Steve, this is an executive session topic. We're not supposed to be talking about an open meeting.
Okay, this was what was on the agenda. But the point that I'm making is, as soon as the microphones were off and as soon as the issue was, you know, the microphone was off, the camera was off, it went into some really bizarre directions in that conversation. And so, you know, when you talk about the Open Meeting Act, what is on the agenda needs to be what is stuck to in the executive session, because that's not what happened. And so my point is, is that when you're doing those kinds of trainings, it really needs to be stuck to, an agenda needs to be made for the executive session, and that needs to be followed, whether that agenda is passed out and then collected up or is verbally mentioned as soon as it goes into executive session, so that it stays on topic and not other things brought up. And that's, that's what I wanted to bring up, so that executive sessions still stay within the dictates of the Open and Public Meeting Act. Thank you.
Thank you, Bart. Any other discretionary for this evening?
Mayor? Mayor, I just wanted to bring up the idea that we're going to try to meet with the developers of that property up on the hill and are going to try to put together another field trip type visit here in the near future, once their schedule opens back up. So just wanted to put that out there for you guys. Keep that in your back pocket.
Okay, thank you, Bill. All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Councilman Mitchell or Councilor Ellis, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?